Good evening, everyone. Though we don't have our full complement of board members, I know that Mr. Demakia is a true sports fan and would appreciate us going ahead and getting started without him. And we have some presentations, so we won't get to the decision-making for a little while. So if I could have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia? Mr. Smith?
President.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here. At this time, we have the pledge. Is there an introduction of our guests?
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Graham, tonight, we will have a student from Admiral King Elementary School who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Madison Bates is a fifth grader, a new student, one of our 160 new students to Admiral King this year, and is the daughter of Autumn Bates. And she has two brothers and two sisters. Her sisters are with her in the audience tonight. Earlier this year, I met with all of our new students, and I thought with the theme of neighborhood schools and just that new theme of Lorraine City Schools this year, we'd have a little essay contest. And the students were to write a compare and contrast of their old school and their new school. And Madison's was well-received and was chosen the winner of tonight's contest. So after the pledge, she will read her essay comparing her old school to Admiral King. Madison, come forward. Lead us in the pledge, please.
(applause) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are over 160 new students counting kindergarten to Admiral King this year. The new students to the building were asked to write a compare and contrast to support Lorraine's Neighborhood Schools. My essay was chosen to represent our school. At my old school, the teachers were very nice. They supported me and always tried to help me to stay positive. They are really helpful and smart. I'm going to Admiral King now, and the teachers here are even nicer. These teachers support me even more and challenge to be the best I can be and do the best work I can. These teachers are teaching me more than I knew before. The schoolwork was easier at my old school because they didn't have hard questions. I liked the old-school work, but I feel like I'm getting smarter at Admiral King. The schoolwork here is more challenging and makes me use my brain more, so I will learn more. I was bullied for two years straight at my old school. I felt sad, and I didn't want to even go to school most of the days. I was picked -- I was very shy and usually didn't say anything when someone picked on me. I did tell my mom, though, and she always would tell me to speak up if I was bullied or saw someone else being bullied. We talked to the teachers and the principal, but it never got any better. Now that I'm here at Admiral King, things are a lot better. I started to get bullied, but the teachers and principals seemed to care a lot, and now I'm not. My friends are nicer and more kind here than at my old school. I just like my new friends way better than my old ones. My new school is better than my old school. I am much happier as a student at Admiral King.
I'd also like to recognize her teacher, who's in the audience tonight, Angela Washington. On behalf of the school board, Madison, they have given you a nice certificate here. It says for your active participation, leading the audience with the Pledge of Allegiance at the Lorraine City School Board of Education meeting, October 17, 2016. And I know they're going to be taking your pictures. You'll be like a movie star. Did a nice job.
Nice job, Madison. And again, first of all, I'm sorry about the bullying, but fantastic essay. And you mentioned earlier that you're pretty shy, so it must've been very difficult for you to do on TV and in front of a lot of people, but you did an excellent job. Tell you what, you want to introduce your family? Get the microphone.
I brought my mom, my sister, and my other sister.
Stand up. Hi, sister and other sister.
Abigail and Savannah, right? And I know Abigail has something to say, right? Come on up. Troy, tell Madison she did a great job, didn't she? Tell her she did a great job. Nice job. Thanks, Madison. Changing schools is very tough. I'm glad it was a great transition for you. Do you want to do a collective picture?
Yeah.
I'm sure they'll be as good as Joe Moxley. Recognition of visitors. We have some guest presentations. We do. Frank, you up? Please introduce yourself to our audience and everyone, since no one's here to introduce you.
I'm Frank Horvitch. I'm the Food Service Director with Aramark. And I have Kelly Kaminski here with me, who is our Assistant Food Service Director. I'm here tonight to present our annual food service report, which is required by the ODE and federal government. Last year, we continued with federal meals and smart snack guidelines district-wide. We began serving lunches at no cost at the high school in about November. Once again, the food service fund ended the school year with a significant surplus at the end of the year. Aramark made their $20,000 donation to the district. What else do we have here? Overall, again, this is all on last year. Last year, our total meals were up 179 meals per day. Breakfast dipped slightly, but lunches were up about 251 meals per day. The majority of that was at the high school since we went to no cost at the high school. We had about 60% breakfast participation and about 80% lunch participation across the district. Last year, we had six schools participate, elementary schools participate in our Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant, which was awarded to us from the federal government. It was a total of $122,000. It was at six elementary schools where our students were exposed to different fresh fruits and vegetables from around the world as a snack. This year, our current focus has been here at New Lorraine High School. We're very proud of the cafeteria and the serving line and the kitchen. We have six new food service stations in our food court. We have the Home Zone. We have Custom Brothers Grill. We have the tortilla made-to-order line. We have a Corner Crust Pizzeria and a Green Street Deli, which is made-to-order for subs and salads. We also introduced Java City in the center, which is fresh brewed coffees, teas, flavored coffees, yogurt parfaits, fresh fruit, whole grain, donuts. We try to make it kind of Panera-ish, if I can use those words, as possible. And we're doing about $350 to $400 a day in à la carte, just there. And that's just being open during lunch, a little bit during breakfast, but it's only about 15 minutes or so. And currently, this last month in September, doing a comparison, we're up 200 meals over last year, just at the high school.
Using the annex last year?
Yes, I combined the ninth grain from the annex, which was kind of tricky, but I was able to merge them together to get how many meals.
So it's a fair comparison.
It is. It's a fair comparison. Also, this year, we introduced a fresh fruit bar at all the elementary schools, where every day, we used to have one fruit per day for lunch. Now, the students at the elementary schools have a variety of fresh fruit, apples, oranges, bananas, canned fruit, and a juice every day they can choose from. And lastly, we are going to, since we've kind of got our handle on the high school, we're going to move on to the middle schools this spring and remarket the middle schools, the three middle schools. Any questions?
We're also doing the lunch service at New Beginnings.
Yes, we are.
And that's working out okay?
Yes.
How has the transition been with this different style of eating facility like here at the high school? It's a lot freer, a lot more open.
Right.
Can you contrast maybe where you were in the first week to where we are kind of now?
Night and day. It's been a huge improvement, just where anywhere. We thought we had everything covered and everything like that, but again, when we have the students all come in and getting them organized, getting them through the line, getting them out in time. And again, it was kind of interesting to see when the kids would walk in, they would walk in and they would just stop, and they would stare and look, and they didn't know which way to go. So that, it sounds kind of funny, but it really did slow things down because they didn't know, even with our banners and our menus and everything, they didn't know what was in each line. So as the kids became more accustomed to it, we were able to gauge what items and how much to prepare of each line, which is a trick in itself sometimes, and just forecasting how many pizzas to make. I mean, last year at the high school, for instance, we were making 30 homemade pizzas. Currently, we're doing about 70. So just that, you know, making those adjustments. We have all new equipment back there. Some of it, to be honest with you, I've been in food service for 26 years. Some of it, I didn't know what, like, what does this do? So the training on all the new equipment and things like that. But it's gotten much, much better.
I think it'd be interesting even reporting back to us, because we do this once a year. But I know some of us have kids in school. At the beginning of the year, all those transitions, all those adjustments, I hear much less complaints about things. But I think also, and I'm guessing it's a protocol, just informing the administration, I mean, is, do we have enough time for kids to eat, based on your observation? Do we have too many kids at one time? Could we use more lunch periods? Because again, those efficiencies are really important, especially when kids sometimes they'll feel like, I only had 10 minutes to eat. Was that because you were messing around?
Right, right.
And it's usually a combination of. So I think feedback of that nature would be very beneficial as we look at planning going forward.
In between myself and Kelly, my Assistant Director, we have noticed that there, you know, there's the onslaught because all the students come in at one time, and it does get quite crowded the first, you know, five, 10 minutes, and then it trickles out. And times the last student goes out, there's always, you know, 10 or 15 minutes to spare.
The 350 to 400 that you guys are doing daily, was that your forecast? Or are you close to your target dollar amount?
Do I, I don't know that off the top of my head, because it was something just totally new and different.
Okay.
We've never done the iced teas and iced coffees and those kind of things like that. And we're, again, we're still adjusting things. We're looking to go to, we also do smoothies there. I forgot to mention, we do smoothies that are made out of 100% juice with fruit. We're going to go to a smoothie bar where the fruits and those things will be displayed out, and we'll make them fresh there for the kids. They can choose from, you know, blueberries, strawberries, apple juice, put it in the blender, blend it for them. Currently, we're making it up kind of ahead of time and putting it on ice.
I got one more question. So the students, they swipe their IDs or whatever, I think? Is that how that works?
They just tap it? They just have to put it in front of the barcode reader?
Now, how does that inventory, is there a way of reconciling that to how much food is distributed?
Sure. When the students go through the line, we ring up what they've eaten by, you know, they've had a cheeseburger and broccoli and a milk. We're able to keep track of that. And we keep production records also, how much we've prepared, how much was left over, how much we served, those kinds of things.
And is there a way of tracking how much was taken? It wasn't, I've looked at the kind of scenario, and it seems to lend itself
Yes, it does.
To loss of product.
And we're working on that. Anytime you do an open concept like that, the market average is that you would have about 3% to 5% theft. We're doing about 1,300 lunches a day. So if we do the math there, I'm not sure right now. In fact, Kelly and I, before we came over earlier this afternoon, we were comparing one item, which I believe is going out, a very hot item that's going out. And we're preparing, and what we're looking at is how much that we produced and by how much was wrung out. And this item, we are going to make some changes with it.
It's like an iPhone. It's a big item on the market. So yeah, and I think that, again, I know that's not necessarily a really pleasant conversation, but we really need to, I think, make sure that...
And we've moved some things. When we first opened, I wanted to have that retail kind of look, so we had, you know, our chip, baked chips out there and our things out there, all kind of self-serve and those kind of things like that. We changed that up and put everything behind, in the Java City area, so that we're able to hand those things out and things like that. But again, it's kind of a learning curve, and we're kind of going through it. But there, I mean, typically, in any type of food court in any school district, there's 3% to 5% theft. And I think we're well within that margin.
But lunches were way up last year, and were already up even more from that this year.
Correct.
And so is à la carte.
Correct.
Fantastic. Good reading. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. This time, we entertain our first hearing of the public. Thank you. Now, may I have a motion to approve or amend minutes from the September 28 meeting and the October 3 meeting?
Support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Since it's for both meetings and I was not at one of them, I will abstain.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes. Any old business? Report recommendations of the treasurer.
Okay, this is the standard October forecast. This is basically getting the totals for '16, updating that. I guess before I start, I'll tell you what is included in the packet. I have a copy of all the PowerPoint slides, as well as a copy of the forecast, and then also the assumptions that go with the forecast. And then I also included, just because I know there's been some questions in past presentations, the Schedule B, which will give you the last, the beginning and ending collection year for all levies, emergency levies, current expense levies, those type of things. So that's what I used, obviously, to tie out certain parts of the forecast. So to start off, the main reason we do this, obviously, per Ohio Revised Code, also, we file it with the Ohio Department of Education, and that's how they determine status, whether you're in caution, watch, emergency, or fiscally sound. It also helps to develop short-term and long-term goals, you know, looking at historical data versus current data versus future data. The other parts, then, is communicates with the financial conditions to the stakeholders, which would be community staff, parents, the board, and other administration. And then we change assumptions based on up-to-date and current information. So we look at a lot of trending, as well as any new information that's come out over, you know, since the previous forecast, which would have been in May. This here, I kind of took and segregated out each section. This is the revenue portion. So looking, I'll go line by line here. Some of the key assumptions for the real property line, 1.01, year-over-year, based on the first half fiscal year collection, which is the second half of calendar year '16, it looks like the collections, and then also looking at trending. So I look year-over-year and see, based on the percentage of one half versus the other, and it's usually right around 46% in the first half, which would be second half of calendar year, versus 54% in the second half, which would be the first half of calendar year '17 for this purpose. And then based on that, I did see, and talking back and forth to the auditor's office, I do see a slight bump where we were assuming about $100,000 decrease per year in these departments, which was, I still continue that out over the forecast. You do see that year-over-year $100,000 decrease. But based on where we're currently collecting and the trending from past, I do see a slight bump. So that right there alone was about $180,000 swing. He had us losing $100,000. I see us gaining about $80,000. So the other things to look at is, if you look at 2020, that's the first year that we get a half-a-year collections remaining on the emergency levy. So then, once we hit calendar year '20, that's when you see the drop from the $17,381 to the $15,913. That's a half a year for that emergency levy that was remaining. And then in the last year, 2021, that is a full year loss of that emergency levy. And again, that, you can't assume, you got to remove it from this line here, but then it is put back in on a lower line in the forecast that I'll show you later. Basically, if the renewal was to pass, where we'd be at financially.
Talking about, in one instance, you considered the emergency level levy renewing.
Yes. Well, we have to pull it out of line 1.01. You have to assume it's not going to pass there. But if you look at a later line, which is line 12.01, that's when you'll see the revenue come back in. And that's, that line is set for that reason. If you have levies that drop off, then you put the lost revenue, which actually comes from not only the tangible or the general property tax, but you also lost some of the tangible personal property line, and also the property tax allocation is also adjusted down because that's your homestead and rollback. So you got a lower revenue up here that you're going to roll back, you're going to have a lower, lower homestead and rollback payment. But you're made whole, the combination of those three lines, you're made whole on that bottom line. That bottom line is basically, if the renewal was to pass, this is where we'd be financially.
And if it wasn't, we would be...
There's a line right above that shows...
Like you said, that in one year, we'd lose 1.6 million. And the other year, the full year would be three-something.
Yeah, it's close. It's like 1.56. The one, and this is one thing I did notice with Dale's forecast, he was taking that amount and adjusting it for homestead and adjusting it down, I think, based on collection percent. This, the number I have in there is the full collection, based on if it was renewed. And that's why you have the $1,563 in the full amount, the $3,126 is actually, it was an emergency levy, so you passed the amount, not the rate. So that would be the full amount based on what we passed to that.
It's based on the amount, not the mileage.
Correct. Correct for the emergency.
But the larger one, which renews in 2020, I believe?
No, it's actually, if you look at the very last page I gave you, it's, the last collection year on the current expense levies is 2021. So we wouldn't see that drop off the forecast till 2022.
The last calendar year.
Well, it's 2021, yeah, that's the last calendar year. So I...
The taxes are based on the calendar year, not a school year.
Correct. Correct.
And they run about six months behind.
Correct. The way it would set up is 2021, so that would run to the end of calendar year 2021. So then, the second half of fiscal year 2022, or the first half of calendar year '22, is when we'd first see that drop down off the top line here and drop down below.
Okay.
So it would be...
So it really has no effect on this?
On this forecast, no.
Forecast, no.
No. Next October, you'll see the first. Then the next, next line, line 1.020, some of the things we consider here. This line was actually set up for the public personal, or the tangible personal property, which actually was phased out. And I did notice this, and I think the different treasurers kind of treat it differently. They took and factored out the public utility personal piece of the real estate property and put it into this line. So based on that, I think, obviously, this being my first forecast, I didn't want to do a major swing like that. But over, when I adjust the forecast for next year, I'm going to pull that out, because we've already received monies into that line item, based on, we've already got the whole first-half settlement collection. But for next year, I'm going to have them receipt that up into the general property tax line, because you really should be showing a zero balance for this because it was phased out. So some people report it differently. I think it's more accurate, because here we are telling everybody that that was phased out, but we're just kind of, I don't want to say we're miscoding it, because, again, it's a judgment call, but I think it should be up in general property tax. So, and then there's an assumed decrease by 5%, and that's to, again, correlate out to how this is adjusting down. You know, this ties out, but with the $100,000 drop here, I was decreasing line by line over 5% here to accommodate, because, again, that's determined by the decrease across the board. Those two lines correlate based on property taxes. And then same effect when it comes down to '20 and '21, it ties out as well. You're losing a half-year collections in 2020 and a full-year collections in 2021 for that same reason, the emergency levy. Then the unrestricted grants and aid. This, I just took this right off the current foundation, the most current payment, which would be, obviously, the most current information we have from the state. So then, based on that, we do have, the only piece that adjusts down year-over-year here is the casino revenue is also factored into these lines. So then, based on that, that's the only decrease. Otherwise, the actual unrestricted foundation piece of this remains flat. But there was a 5% decrease for casino revenue year-over-year in each one of these as well. The restricted portion, this is the revenue. Again, I pulled off the current foundation report, and I do have it flatlined for the entire piece of the forecast or life of the forecast. This does correlate, you'll see the number for unrestricted dropped a little bit, but this restricted increased. They do directly correlate in the sense that if you have career tech funding rise since we're on the cap, you're going to see a drop in your unrestricted funds, because it's capped. So if you have one number increasing for restricted, those numbers are going to, this is going to decrease, it correlates. So overall, if you want to see comparison year-over-year, it's best to add the two together and see where the foundation overall is coming in. The property tax allocation, then, line 1.05, this is going to be your homestead and rollback This, again, with the expiration of the emergency levy, this ties out as well, because, again, like I stated earlier, it's going to decrease based on the overall dollars you're receiving because the homestead is based on that, on the general property tax and the tangible personal line. And then the all-of-the-revenue line, this is going to be your revenue besides state and local funding, such as reimbursements, rental income, interest income, just for example. This line is flatlined for all costs except for indirect costs. That is a, it's a reduction off of the foundation, and that was reduced by 5%. So if you pull out the indirect costs, this would be flatlined otherwise. This is what I just ran through. I wanted to put it in the slide so you guys can look back at it. This is just for fiscal year '17, this is how percentage-wise the different pieces of revenue tie in for the overall amount of the $110,870,466. You'll see our biggest one, obviously, is the unrestricted grant funding. State funding, of course, is how we're predominantly funded, so. This is going to show, I wanted to kind of show trending. So, this is going to show, I wanted to kind of show trending. You know, we're, we're doing pretty good for property tax-wise. We did see a slight dip, but we do see, here's that increase here and then trending it down a hundred thousand each year. And then this is the levies dropping off, or the emergency levy dropping off. Unrestricted grant funding, this is off the foundation report. We, this, this shows the, with the new biennium budget, how we jump roughly five or six million year-over-year. And obviously, this will, I flatlined it, but depending on what the new biennium budget does in the spring, we could see this increase continue or, you know, it all depends. Now moving into expenditures, again, I broke this piece out separately as well. Some key assumptions here for the personal service or salary and wages line, 3.01. This takes into account all negotiated agreements that were in place prior to October, basically, when I first started pulling in, you know, increases and calculating it out. If anything that, you know, has happened from October 1 through, if any negotiated agreements were finalized, obviously, that wouldn't be in there. This assumes five retirements per year, year-over-year, so that's, that'll be some of the decrease. But of course, if there are increases within the negotiated agreements, there'll be some increases offsetting there as well. And additional adds that were discussed in our spring budgetary meetings and anything that has come up, kind of recommendations or anything spilling, filling different areas that we feel we need more employees or whatnot. And again, that, that usually comes from meeting with Dr. Graham and his staff. So, and then the next line, item 3.02, your employee retirement insurance benefits. The STRS and SDRS, which are inside, which are part of this line here, those directly correlate to the salary increases. So if we had a bump in salary based on an agreement, or again, if the retirements dropped salary, you're going to see a direct correlation between the retirement because it's a percentage of the salary amount. The other piece of that is your health, health, life, and dental, and we assume an increase of about seven percent year-over-year. And that adjusts in January because that's the planned year. So, the other piece then, purchase services, 3.03. This line, it includes any services that the district outsources that isn't done internally, such as cafeteria services, busing. You do see an increased cost from 2016 fiscal year to what I'm budgeting for 2017. And these costs are, the increased cost is due to district-wide scanning system that is being implemented, services to move to the new administration building, additional utilities associated with the new high school, tighten college contract, which will eventually be a savings in fiscal year 2020 as it slowly phases out the other college program that we have, and then wraparound medical services. The other piece that was, that's built in here is your open enrollment, community schools and scholarship programs. This line is kind of the unpredictable set of costs. So with that, the forecast assumes about a 1.5 million dollar increase year-over-year and compounding. So you see that it rises based on that. And I will say that in 2017, you'll see it drop in 2018, that there are some costs associated with the new high school that are one-time costs. They might not, they're not ongoing. So, supplies, item 3.04, you'll see increased costs in fiscal year 2017, and that's due to the addition of replacement plans for art supplies, PE supplies, band equipment and uniform and textbooks. Other than that, the supplies are flatlined, the life of the forecast. There is, there, it looked like to be a two-year, based on our discussion, the spring meeting, for the PE, PE replacement costs that are just in the first two years of this fiscal year 2017, 2018, there's about $28,000 right then from '18 to '19. I think it's just more to getting those initial replacements in there and then just an ongoing cost associated with continued replacements. For the capital outlay line, this line is going to be, you'll see that large bump in fiscal year '17. That is directly associated with the one-time cost for the new administration building. So then you see it drops right back down in the same range, but the one-time, I believe it's 2.3 million dollars, that's associated with the new administration building. And then all of the costs are flatlined based on that for the life of the forecast. Then we have our debt service and interest fiscal charges, which is line 4.02 and 4.06. This is the repayment of the tan loans that were taken back in fiscal year 2011, 2012, and they are set to be completely paid off by fiscal year 2018. So those will come off the forecast at that point. And then, other object line, 4.3, this line is kind of a catch-all for anything that was not incurred in the above sections. This is things such as membership dues, bank charges, viability insurance, auditor fees, things like that, to name a few. Again, that's what I just ran through. This is, just like I did for revenue, to kind of give you an idea, pie chart, kind of a visual to, to see where our biggest costs are. Obviously, it's going to be personal services and then right behind it is purchase services. Again, show you how we're trending for salary and wages. Same thing, a lot of this directly, again, correlates with the salary lines being that the retirements are in this, sunk into this line. Purchase services, again, this is that bump I, I discussed in regards to the one-time costs in regards to the new high school. Supplying materials, you do see it, obviously, because I flatlined it, so you do see the jump from '16 to '17 for those replacement plans, and then you do see it steady off and flatline. And this is the unreserved fund balance. The biggest lines on this, obviously, is the, your cash balance line. So this is your, how you're spending excess revenue over expenditure. Then you have your cash balance year-over-year, and this is your cash balance at the end of the fiscal year. And then based on that, your estimated encumbrances at the end of the year, this is outstanding POs that would still be outstanding at the end of the year that we have to account for. So then that gives us our true fund balance that we would certify with the auditor's office. This is the line here, again, the renewal property tax line, that you have your half a year collections that are factored back in and your full year collection. So then, based on that, we are trending, I think we were, I got a copy of it in here. Based on Dale's forecast in May, we were looking at roughly about an eight million dollar deficit in 2020. And then based on some of the costs, we're paying better for supply and material purchase services than what was budgeted and estimated for fiscal year '16, as well as some increased revenue streams that I had mentioned, mainly the real property line. So we're coming in short about 226,000 for 2020 and for 2021, about 11 million. And this, this is kind of, Dale had it to where he'd go to a separate screen and had the what-if scenario based on what the biennium budget growth is, and then also if our incremental cost increases of the 1.5 million that's assumed. And I could click on this, so if you got some scenarios you want me to run through based on if the biennium budget jumped us another 2 million per year for the next two years, where it would get us through, or if our costs were lower, I could run a few scenarios for you. So I don't know.
This is, I'm sorry, that was assuming that there was no increase.
Correct. Yeah, I assume for, because the increase is in the fiscal year '17 line item, that's factored into the foundation amount. And we did see that five to six million dollar increase. We do not have any information so far until the new biennium budget comes out in the spring for fiscal year '18 and '19. So there's nothing assumed because, not sure what direction did we go. And then this also assumes the 1.5 million, which it could come in lower. Questions? Any questions?
Clear.
I'm assuming there's no eight million dollar typo in there.
This dude, this guy. Just thought he'd check. Good question.
Thank you. Thank you.
So then, based on that, recommend for approval items 8.01 through 8.04.
So move. Support.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Okay, at this time, report recommendations of the superintendent.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, I'd like to recommend for approval 10.01 to 10.13 Personnel Matters.
So move.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And I'd like the board to consider for approval 11.01 to 11.07, and 11.09 to 11.15.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And I'd like the board to consider for approval 11.08, the contract with Lorraine County Community College.
So move.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Abstain.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Would we like a, to note a reason of abstention?
Yes.
Still employed.
Same as before.
Same, same as the first hundred times.
Just for the record.
Groceries.
Good for you. Sometimes that's not quite the scenario for many folks, you know, so. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, is there any new business for discussion? This time, we would entertain any committee reports or requests from board members. All right, our next meeting, oh, we aren't there yet, sorry. Hearing of the public, anyone want to talk to us now? Great.
Same as last time.
And we'll not go into executive session. Glad to hear that. And our next meeting is when?
November 7.
November 7. So our next meeting will be November 7 at 6:30, right here, same bat time, same bat location. And may I have, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Support.
Discussion? You don't want to talk about it at all? Roll call please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
No.
Mr. Sturgill?
Make him stay.
Yes, Mr. Williams?
Make him stay.
Go try.
Thank you. Go try.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.
To purchase a high-quality copy of the program you just viewed, please call Lorraine City Schools Television at 282-8400.